Alright, you all here? Sorry about that delay. There was a iPad sharing issue with my daughters. Common story right now. Alright, so today we're gonna do a study session, um, working on the homework. And kind of summarizing some of what we've learned in the last couple of weeks, you know, accounting, carbon and economics. So I thought I'd just kind of field questions and then expound on some of the background ideas that those questions bring up. And otherwise, we'll just slowly work through the homework together. Does that sound good? I should open up the chat. Also, um, I want you to all to be starting to think about possible project ideas. For the second half of the quarter where you actually create a marginal abatement cost for a carbon mitigation measure. You can use, um, the Bellingham Climate Action Task Force Final Report. It has several different measures in there, so you could pick one out of there. Something as simple as replacing all residential water heaters within Bellingham with electric heat pump water heaters, switching gas to electric. Or something as complicated as making railroad avenue a walking, a walking street. So there's several ideas that you could find there. You could also use Huxley College of the Environment as a potential, um, idea. That's gonna be more difficult because we can't be on campus and it's hard to find that information right now. But you could think about, you know, what would happen if we, you know, replaced all the leaky windows in the Environmental Studies building or in Arts and Hall, for example. That sort of, those sorts of things. And then finally, if you have, um, something that you think might be curious with respect to COVID-19, for example, how is that affecting local businesses? How's it affecting their, their finances and their carbon emissions? That could be interesting as well. My hypothesis is that COVID-19 absolutely reduces carbon emissions, but it's at an extreme cost. And we could use that marginal abatement cost for various effects of COVID-19 to compare it to responsible climate action. Like the Community Energy Challenge here in Bellingham. So start having to think about that. I did watch the, um, I lurked the entire time on the Carbon Hackathon. I wasn't, I guess I was, I was unclean and not allowed to actually participate, but I could, I could see everybody and listen to it all. And I was really impressed with some of those ideas and you're more than welcome to use an idea from that Carbon Hackathon for this class too. That way you can kill, you know, two birds with one stone. No reason to like replace, redo work. So if you've, or if you already are running with something, then, then go with that. Alright, uh, any questions about the homework? Or do you wanna see kinda how I worked my way through it? Or? What are y'all thinking? Can you go over, okay, I got a question here. Can you go over how the weight of the bottles affects the emissions from transporting the water? Yes. And are we, so there's two different bottles we're dealing with. Um, the San Pellegrino bottles and the weight for them matters in terms of ton miles. So when the ships travel across the ocean from Italy, the amount of emissions that the San Pellegrino is responsible for depends on their mass and how far they go. So that ship is moving no matter what and producing a tremendous amount of emissions. But the part that the San Pellegrino is responsible for is just their, their mass, not. So it's also shipping other things from Italy, like who knows? Pasta and wine and olive oil. We're only paying for the emissions from the, from the San Pellegrino. And then similarly, uh, Yeah.
Are we assuming that it's the 52 cases, um, that we'd be consuming over the year that's being shipped? Like just on one shipment? Okay. So it's the weight of the 52 cases on just like one shipment and then it's the, how many trips to the store a year?
I think you go every other week, so.
Twenty-six trips to the store. Okay, and that's just a 10-mile trip one way?
Um, you know, I wrote it kinda ambiguously. Yes, 10-mile trip one way, so 20 miles both ways. So if you've already done the calculations and just said 10 miles, I'm not gonna sweat that. Especially because, you know, the, the gasoline consumed by the Volvo is pretty small compared to other things. And then you could make that same assumption for the other one. Yes, so the ton miles matter for the ship and the truck. The truck gets the San Pellegrino from the, from the shore to the, to the warehouse and then eventually to the, the supermarket or wherever you buy the San Pellegrino from.
In the, in the PDF, it says that, uh, you're traveling to and from in 10 miles.
Okay. 10 miles in a Volvo to and from the store. Yeah, I wrote that totally ambiguously. When I say that, I think it's 10 miles to and then 10 miles from, but.
Gotcha.
A totally could be read either way, so that's on me. I need to make that homework a little more clear. Okay, um, so I wonder how I should do this. Maybe I'll pull up a So this is the cover sheet that I made for y'all. You don't have to use this or you can mess around with it wherever you want to. But we could start kinda working through the San Pellegrino half of this thing. With all these kinds of calculations, the ultimate goal is trying to get to that MAC curve, right? And that's, um, dollars per metric ton and it equals the, um, on the top, it's project dollars minus baseline dollars. And then on the denominator, sorry, writing pad issues, it's, um, baseline carbon in metric tons, carbon dioxide minus project in metric tons. And then all these things break into more things. So, uh, this will involve capital costs and operating costs. Same with this. And you need to annualize those using CRF, the Cost Recovery Factor, but we'll all get into that over time. And then the CO2 emissions for all these things, they depend on, you know, your scope one, scope two, scope three emissions depending on the project. And for these sorts of things where we're shipping things, then you'll have emissions from shipping, semi-truck or train and a final like car. And these will all have, they're, all their emissions depend on, um, the carbon dioxide intensity of that fuel. So it's like kilograms CO2 per fuel burned either in mass or gallons. But then they also have other species of gases, um, other global warming greenhouse gases. And so you have to calculate the CO2 equivalent and CO2 equivalent equals, um, the kilograms of greenhouse gas multiplied by its global warming potential. And so you can see how this really starts to balloon up. And that's why it's important to keep, keep good books, have this general framework in your head. And then continue to, to plug away and work through these different things. Thank God my mom is FaceTiming my girls to like read a book to them or something. Okay, um, so let's go, let's start with, uh, the San Pellegrino. And so I'm gonna try to digest a lot of what comes out of the PDF and we can go through there. Hey Violet, can you come down here, please? Okay, so this is how I attack this problem. Um, we could all do it different ways, but I have like, I just start collecting all the facts I can. So like bottle weight for the San Pellegrino is 0.4 kilograms. Then I think about how many times I have to carry this and how far I have to carry it. So I have things like, um, travel, sea travel is 8,000 miles. I should put the units over here. That way I can actually take advantage of Excel and do these calculations. Truck travel. Keep on watching the chat in case anybody wants to interrupt me or tell me this is a waste of your time and we can move on to something else. Truck travel, 1,000 miles, um, and then Volvo travel. And my analysis is 20, but it's okay if you guys said, uh, 10. And then, um, how many trips I have to make per case is only 0.5 because I consume a case a week, but I only travel every other week. Turn off Outlook so we don't get stupid email announcements. Trips per case. So that's all the distances. Um, now I have to think about their, uh, the carbon emission factors for these different things. So I could maybe put, I have these different types of travels here, so I could make another column. There's a problem, okay. Where I could say, uh, carbon intensities. Okay, so sea travel was, um, this isn't, I don't even wanna do carbon intensity yet. Let's do fuel intensities. So fuel intensity is, uh, the service you get from that fuel for, per unit fuel paid. So the service we get for sea shipping is we pay 0.2, gallons per ton mile. And note, I spelled it T-O-N because that's a short ton. It's 2,000, um, pounds, not 1,000 kilograms. So we're short a little bit by like 200 pounds or 100 kilograms. Truck is, what was that? Yeah.
Someone in the chat just asked, "The empty bottle weighs 0.4 kilograms. Shouldn't a full bottle weigh 1.4 kilograms?"
Yes. Yes, um. Yeah, for some reason, um, when I'm, I'm looking through my solution sheet right now and I added, I added that one just later on in the calculation, but we should do it from the start. And I will be very specific and say full bottle weight. Thank you for that. This fuel intensity is 0.1 gallons per ton mile. So check it out. Trucks are way less efficient at moving goods than ships. And that's why we use shipping to move things around the world. Airplanes are worse yet by, you know, a factor of 100 or so. And then, um, the car fuel intensity is, uh, say 20, 20 miles per gallon. Okay, so we're starting to fill it out. It's tedious, but this is, this is what you have to do for these kinds of analyses. And just kinda, you know, keep this big picture in place. We're trying to get to some of these numbers, uh, kilogram CO2 per fuel. So we can type in carbon intens, or CO2 intensities here, um. Gasoline is 8.8 kilograms CO2 per gallon. And you can look that up on, uh, Google or you can look that up in our, uh, emission factor sheet from the EPA. So a lot of the carbon stuff is underneath this carbon accounting lecture. And so, um, EPA emission factors for fuels, we can look that up. It's nigh unreadable in Canvas, but somewhere down here, we have coal, fossil fuel drives, biomass, natural gas, gaseous, gaseous petroleum products. That's what we're looking for. Motor gasoline. And it has kilograms CO2 per gallon, 8.78, so 8.8. If it has a 10% ethanol blend, it'll affect that slightly, um, but it gets complicated because you, you get less energy with ethanol, but if the ethanol truly came from corn, then it might be carbon neutral. But anyway, just use 8.8 kilograms CO2 per gallon when you're doing with, dealing with gasoline. Let's see, nothing else going on in chat. Okay, so now we need the other intensities. Ship emission factor is kilograms CO2 per gallon. So that's for residual fuels. I got a few questions about what is a residual fuel? What does that mean? So you take oil out of the ground or synthetic crude from Athabasca and tar sands, you put it in a refinery. Refinery heats up the oil in a stacked column and as the, so the oil gets heated up to the point where it evaporates. And oil is just this huge soup of different hydrocarbons, all different chains. And the longer chain stuff, the gummier stuff falls out of gases, gaseous solution first and becomes a liquid. And in that, that stacked column in the distillation tower, those lower ones drain off and get partitioned into different petroleum products. So that, the gummiest one would be tar and that'd be used for making roads and roofs and that sorts of thing. As you go up the column, the most, um, profitable one is diesel. And so that's, a lot of refiners just try to tune their distillation towers to make as much diesel as possible. That's not possible always because again, oil is this huge soup of different hydrocarbons. And so you'll get a lot of gasoline off the, off the top of the diesel because it's lighter than diesel. That's still super profitable. Underneath that, you'll get kerosene, um, underneath the diesel, which is still pretty profitable because you can use that to, um, that's what airplanes use. But then below that is, is this really kinda, you're starting to get closer to an oil, like a motor oil. You're somewhere between diesel and motor oil and that's what this residual fuel is. And it's not very profitable at all. And so it's used for, um, for, it's not profitable because you can't use it to start an engine right away. You have to warm the engine up enough that you make the oil runny enough or gaseous enough that it can be aspirated and combusted. And so it's used for heating homes. So it's heating oil. That's what residual fuel is. And those furnaces that run on oil, they slowly have to heat up and then they begin to burn the oil. Or it's used in shipping and a ship, you know, turns on and stays on for months at a time. And so that's, those are the two applications it's used in. Okay, so we got our, um, shipping oil. Now we have truck travel, so that's gonna be diesel. And so the truck emission factor for diesel is 10.15 kilograms CO2 per gallon. Uh, notice that diesel has higher emissions than gasoline. That's because it's got more carbons, right? Gasoline, it's pegged to be about octane, so sit eight carbons, oct. Diesel can be from 10 to 12, even up to 14 carbons. And so yeah, you get more energy because there's more stuff to burn per gallon. That's why diesel cars can go like, get like 50 miles per gallon, uh, but you're also making more CO2. Alright, so we have some CO2 intensities. And so now we just have to start calculating, uh, some of these ton miles, right? How many ton miles did we actually use? We have our fuel intensities. We have our CO2 intensities. So we can go from ton miles to gallons and then gallons to CO2. Cool. So now we gotta calculate ton miles. Alright, I'm just gonna start getting sloppier for the sake of doing the calculations. Oh, there's one more greenhouse gas I gotta worry about, right? And that's the, uh, nitrous oxide. So the nitrous oxide intensity for sea travel is, um, 2 grams per gallon. And like, well, that's nothing, right? But a lot of gallons may get consumed over the course of that travel. How many gallons are used for the San Pellegrino? Well, that's something we need to calculate. But the other thing to pay attention to is that the greenhouse, the global warming potential value for N2O is significant. So, um, I'll put that here. GWP for N2O, um, again, you can find that on Canvas underneath the carbon dioxide lecture or look it up using Google. So here is the latest global warming potential values from Assessment Report 5 from the Intergovernmental Panel for Climate Change. So we click that link. We see it for the second assessment report, the fourth and the fifth. Go with the fifth because that's the latest. And these are all for the 100-year time horizon. Arguably, this is what the industry and most people use as the 100-year time horizon. I think the 20 is more appropriate because that's what we actually have to deal with, but let's look it up. Alright, so nitrous oxide right here. Fifth assessment report has a GWP of 265 for the 100-year time horizon. I'm getting a question. Isn't it 3 grams of N2O per gallon? Probably. Each gallon residual fuel combustion emits 3 grams of N2O. Okay, yes, thank you. 265 for the global warming potential value. So back to the assignment. Global warming potential is 265 on the, uh, 100-year. I'm just making a note of that to keep good books, not necessary, but if you're actually producing this report for a company, this is stuff you need to keep track of. Um, and this is actually 3 grams per gallon based on the homework I wrote. Okay. So what is a global warming potential? Again, back to here. It's a way to convert any greenhouse gas into CO2 equivalents. That way we can use one number to look at the global warming, damage that a particular activity, uh, incurs, all in terms of CO2. And all the hard math's been done for you. In class, I showed how you integrate over concentration of that gas in the atmosphere and its radiative forcing over some time horizon. You don't need to do any of that. That's what the, that's why the global warming potential value is so handy. It just, uh, its units are, um, kilograms CO2 equivalent per kilogram gas that you're, you're studying. And so to calculate the CO2 equivalents in kilograms, you just say, "How many kilograms of the gas do you have?" Multiply it by its global warming potential value and the kilograms of gas cancel out with this thing and you're left with simply units of CO2 equivalent in kilograms. And so that's, that's why it's super easy. Um, it's a lot easier than you think, right? You just multiply the amount of gas you have by that number and now you have the CO2 equivalent. Okay, let's start going. Alright, get my camera out of the way. Alright, so, um, make a new kind of table here. Just call it baseline because that's the San Pellegrino. So San Pellegrino, GHG emissions. So it's gonna have a lot of different components. Bottle weight is 1.4. We already figured that out. And so what's the annual bottle weight? Mass. So these things, these, when you're calculating the MAC, the dollars are all annualized and the CO2 emissions are all annualized. We're trying to figure out how much, how much money do we spend a year and how many emissions do we emit per year? That's, that's the standard. So the annual bottle weight will be, um, we have 12 bottles per case. Those 12 bottles per case times the weight of those bottles and then we have 52 cases per year because we have one case per week. So here's the annual bottle weight is 873.6 kilograms. Okay. And we make, so then again, like there's so many different paths you can take. I'll just start with the, what I think is the easiest one and that's the, um, Volvo. So annual gasoline is going to be, um, this equals 20 miles times, um, 52 weeks, 52 weeks, but then we only make, um, a trip every other week, so multiplied by this trips per case, 0.5. And then, um, so we have miles. But we wanna figure out gallons, so then we divide, we have total miles, we divide that by miles per gallon. So we'd have miles over miles per gallon and that would give us our gallon, our number of gallons. So divided by 20 miles per gallon, that's the fuel intensity of the Volvo. We're left with 26 gallons of, uh, gasoline. Cool, starting to get there. Gasoline emissions then will be equals the amount of fuel we use, it's 26, multiplied by its emission factor. And so Volvo is right here. We have 8.8 kilograms CO2 per gallon of gasoline. That's not dependent on what car you are. That's just what happens when you burn gasoline. You could light it and fire, on fire in your front yard like a hick and it'd make the same amount of CO2. And so it makes, um, 229-ish kilograms of CO2. Okay, we got the gasoline emissions. Let's keep on going. So now we need, uh, figure out this, this ton mile stuff. So, um, mass distance by C. That's gonna equal, we need a conversion factor in here, I think. So sorry, I'm thinking out loud. So we need to figure out how to go from short tons to tons, uh, so, uh, tonny to ton is, one metric ton equals 1.10231 US tons. Okay, we got that. Just gonna put that here. This is, uh, tons per ton. Okay, so the mass by C will be, um, how much it weighs, how How much it weighs, how much it travels? And then. Yeah, so it weighs. Eight hundred and seventy-three point six kilograms. It travels eight thousand miles by C. And now we've calculated how many kilogram miles? So to go from kilograms to tons, we have to divide by. A thousand, but we actually have to divide by. This number times a thousand, because we're going from. Ton miles to tunny miles, so this will be one, one, zero, two. You guys follow that? I kinda did two steps at once.
So this is recording, right?
Yeah.
This will be posted somewhere presumably before the assignment is due, so if we like, need to go back and be like, hey. What was it that you did at this point? That's like theoretically going to be possible.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Um I'm feeling a little iffy about what I just did right now, though. Let me think about. Let me go over here. See, this is why you should have like um. I always like to have uh some paper while I'm doing, you know, writing computer programs or doing Excel or anything to make sure I. Make sure my units are correct, so I want um, I wanna calculate. Trying to calculate uh. Ton miles, because the emission factor. CO2 intensities are in gallons per ton mile, so I need to go from ton miles to gallons to CO2. So maybe I shouldn't have done this, um let me mess around for a sec. So. I'm trying to calculate ton miles.
Could you do the conversion factor for kilograms to tons, like vice versa?
Yeah, that might be a better approach. And so let me just think through this, so I don't break my brain. So ton miles is a mass distance and it goes. Eight thousand miles and. We have. Eight hundred and seventy-three point six kilograms. So I have kilogram miles, but I want ton miles, specifically, I want short ton miles. And so this would be um. One. Metric ton per a thousand kilograms. And now it's one ton. Per, okay, yeah, so I did the number. Backwards. That conversion, so one ton should equal something smaller, so it'd be one over this, this uh number. Equals one divided by that. Okay. Zero point nine something. Metric tons, running out of space here. Okay, so let's. Go back to Excel and do this properly. So I have mass times distance.
The chat has just said, didn't you give us fuel intensities in short ton miles on the homework?
Did I, I believe I gave, yeah, fuel intensities in short tons. And so, yeah, that's what I'm trying to do, I'm trying to calculate short ton miles right now. Um let me finish this, so a thousand. That a thousand there is to go from kilograms to metric tons, one metric ton has a thousand kilograms. And then to go from metric tons to short tons. I have to make this smaller, because a metric ton. Or a short ton is smaller than a metric ton. Yeah, that looks better to me. This is how many ton miles it traveled, short ton miles. Isn't this metric English stuff so fun? Didn't you give us fuel intensities in short ton to mi- miles on the homework? Yeah, I'll double check that just to make sure. Yeah, the default baseline field intensity factors are zero point zero zero two gallons per short ton mile, yeah. So that's why I wanted to calculate these in short ton miles, I'd calculated it in um. In metric ton miles, and that's why it's that smaller number, it's like six thousand something. Uh because uh it traveled the same distance, it was the same mass distance, but the mass. Component was a bigger number, so the number of metric ton miles is gonna be smaller than the number of short ton miles. Okay, so hopefully this next calculation will go a little more smoothly, since we did this one. Mass distance by truck. And this is gonna be a very similar type thing, we have same amount of mass per year, eight hundred and seventy-three point six kilograms. Multiplied by the distance in the truck, so now we have kilogram, kilogram miles, but we need short ton miles. So again, we divide by a thousand. Kilograms per metric ton, that, that puts metric ton on the numerator. But we want short tons, so then we have to divide also by that zero point nine oh seven. Cause that's how many uh short tons there are per metric ton. Okay, so we're getting there. Um so now we have how many ton miles we have, and now we have our fuel intensities, which are gallons per ton miles, so now we can calculate how many gallons we need. So. Gallons. By C. Is going to be a lot. Easier, it's just how many ton miles we have by C, multiplied by gallons per ton mile. By C. And this is gonna be residual fuel. Gallons by truck. It's gonna equal how many ton miles by truck. Multiplied by the number of gallons per ton mile for trucking. So this is the kind of thinking that like Amazon and Walmart do all day long, right? Cause fuel is money, they care less about the CO2 than they do the money, and so they're always trying to calculate how to move things around. For the least amount, least amount of ton miles required. So this would be gallons of diesel in the truck. Yeah.
Would you really quickly just hover over or like the formula for mass distance by truck? I think I missed one thing you put in there.
Yeah. So we have um.
Oh, which is bottle.
Okay. Mass, which is the total amount, yeah, mass we shipped, multiplied by distance, and from those first two terms, we have. Kilogram miles, but we need short ton miles, and so this next term is converting from kilograms to metric tons and then metric tons to. Short tons.
Okay, cool, thank you.
Yeah. Okay, now we have our emission factors here or our CO2 intensities, so now we can go from gallons to kilogram CO2. Alright, so um. Emission, move my camera a little more. Emissions uh by C. Equals how many gallons we go by C, multiplied by the emission factor for sea travel, which is residual fuel. Again, it's worse than diesel, which is worse than gasoline, because we are, we're burning more carbon, it's getting closer to coal than it is to natural gas. The carbon to hydrogen ratio is going up. So this is kilogram CO2. And that's straight up CO2, right? Not just, not CO2E. And then the emissions by truck. Equals how many gallons we need per truck per year. Uh multiplied by. Diesel emission factor. Okay. Okay, um we're not quite done, what am I missing? For the emissions for the San Pellegrino.
And then N2O.
Yep, so we made, we emitted nitrous oxide as well, so we gotta include that. So um. We have our N2O global warming potential, that's two hundred and sixty-five kilograms of N2O per kilogram CO2. Or two hundred and sixty-five kilograms CO2 per kilogram N2O. And then um. We need to include. Uh how much N2O got emitted, and we had that somewhere, right? What did I say, three? Somebody helped me out somewhere, three grams per gallon, right here, that's the N2O emission factor. So. N2O emissions by C. Are going to equal um. We get. Three grams per gallon. Multiplied by the number of gallons we travel in sea. And then multiplied by. The global warming potential. And that looks like a huge number, but that's because it's grams of CO2 equivalent. So this should be this divided by. A thousand. Gives us kilogram CO2 equivalent. So it's, it's not, it's not um negligible, right? So the total emissions. By C are a hundred and seventy-four for kilogram CO2. But when we get another twelve kilograms of CO2 equivalent, just from those few grams of uh. Of nitrous oxide that got emitted, and so it's what, it's like greater than a um five percent effect. Could you revisit emissions by C real quick? Um yeah, so emissions by C is right here. Um it's simply how much fuel you use, multiplied by the carbon intensity of that fuel. So we use fifteen point four gallons of residual fuel. And this is the CO2 intensity here, so you have gallons multiplied by kilograms of CO2 per gallon, you get that number. Now, to get to the number of gallons of residual fuel we use, that's much more complicated. We have to calculate how many ton miles are required, so again, a ton mile is a mass distance measurement. So. You could move. One ton of stuff. One mile, that's a ton mile, or you could, let's do a metric ton mile, so it's, makes more sense. So that would be a ton mile, or you could move. You know. One kilogram of stuff. A thousand miles. And these two are equal. Right? You're still doing a, a metric ton mile, uh cause you moved some mass. A thousand miles, not that um point one or point zero zero one. Metric tons times a thousand is one ton mile, same as one metric ton times one mile is a ton mile. Okay, so um. Yeah, to calculate again the ton miles to get the number of gallons by C, that's when we had to take. How much stuff, how much mass, that's this cube I drew. Multiplied by how far it went, and that's this eight thousand miles from Italy. And so how, how much stuff, multiplied by how far it went, and then there's this stupid conversion factor to go from kilograms. To short tons. One kilogram equals point zero 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 nine oh seven short tons. Is a metric ton a tunny? Yes. Yeah, so. What the hell? Yeah, metric ton equals. Tunny. Does not equal, I don't know why I put a hashtag, hashtag ton, does not equal a ton. Um and then lowercase t. Nobody has a goddamn idea what that is, don't use that. In general, it's, I think it's a short ton, but it's all over the place, so um when you run into that, you have to like, read through the whole paper. And try to figure out what they're actually talking about. Cause otherwise you have a ten percent error, and usually people that write papers like that have ten percent errors all over the place, so you should just throw it away. Okay, where were we? So. I feel like I'm messing this thing up, okay. So total emissions. For the San Pellegrino. Equals. The. Emissions by C. Plus. The emissions from the Volvo gasoline emissions. Plus the emissions by truck. Plus. The emissions from the N2O. And then for the MAC, we want this in metric tons, so this equals. That divided by a thousand. So it's pretty crazy to even think about this, like. This San Pellegrino habit is responsible for a half ton of CO2, just for a single household. Um it also. You know. Pays homage to the point that um. Wealthy disproportionately emit far, far, far more CO2 than, you know, the. CO2 scales nonlinearly with uh wealth. People make the case that, well, you know, we all kinda drive the same, we all have the same um. Those sort of like local emissions, but then when you look at the emissions associated with consumption, then it gets, it gets really dramatic. And so what we mainly calculated were um. A bunch of scope one emissions, so a bunch of different things, producing smoke somewhere along the way, so the ship, the truck and the car. But when you be looking at an individual and their cons- consumption habits, these would all be considered scope three emissions. Because these are emissions that are associated with bringing that San Pellegrino into that person's house. Something that happened far away. Okay, is this useful? Do you wanna keep on going? Yes, good. Okay, so we figured out the emissions for the um. For the San Pellegrino, now we have to, we can go, again, choose your own adventure, we can do um. The spring water, we can start doing uh. Finances. Maybe we should do just a little finances, because uh that way we can just stay on the um, the uh, the San Pellegrino. And yeah, I'm getting some signal to do finances too, so. Yeah, let's do. Baseline, so again, that's San Pellegrino in this case um. Dollars. Okay, so. We have to pay for it, right? You have to buy it from the store, so um. San Pellegrino H2O cost. Is going to equal um. Well, how many bottles do we buy and how much does it cost per bottle? So I forget what I put in the homework, let me look back over. Well, how many bottles do we buy and how much does it cost per bottle? So I forget what I put in the homework. Let me look back over at that.
Dollars per case is eight dollars.
Oh, thank you. Okay, so. Getting all over the place here. Okay, so this equals, um. Guess I should be more careful with this. So, um. Dollars per case equals eight dollars. USD and then. Trips for case, cases, cases, uh, full bottle weight, blah, blah. Okay, then cases.
And whoever's like moving in the background mute. I think Jordan maybe.
Okay. Looks like they calmed down, but I'll be more cognizant of that. I hate driving zoom. So, um. SP cost. Equals. Eight dollars per case times fifty two cases per year. Four hundred and sixty dollars. Okay, but that's not the only cost, um. We have to. Burn some gasoline, right? So, um. Let me think about that. We have to. Know how far we went, which we already calculated. Annual gasoline is twenty six gallons. And then we have to have the price per gasoline. So, uh. Dollar per gallon, um, gasoline. Anybody remember what I said that was for the homework? Three seventy five? Dollar gas equals. Price per gallon multiplied by number of gallons. Okay, so, um, in a sense, these are all operating costs, right? They're. We don't need to annualize these costs because there's it's gonna be the same each year, assuming that the price of San Pellegrino is the same each year and the price of gasoline is the same each year. So. So the annual costs, it's all gonna be OpEx. Equals how much we spend for San Pellegrino and how much we've spent to get the San Pellegrino. That's ridiculous. Know the difference between addition and multiplication? Okay. Alright, so.
That's. That's sorry, I know. Is that OPX?
Yeah, that stands for OpEx, operational costs. Um, yeah, it's just business slang, so.
Okay, sweet.
Um, CPX equals capital cost. And OpEx. Equals operational. And then, um, sometimes you'll see V R X and that'd be variable. And I've never really understood what that is. It's like, you know, payroll and maintenance and different things that happen every once in a while. So maybe. If you're real crazy, you'd think of like, you know, how many. Oil changes, entire changes amortized over the life of your Volvo, you would need to pick up your San Pellegrino, but. That would absolutely be, you know, in the de minimis category. I think that's it for, um.
Or the CRF and annualizing stuff. Does that go here or?
No, because you didn't, you're not buying anything you're using over time, right? There were no capital costs. It's all. You just buy a bottle and drink it, buy a bottle and drink it. Um, there's no technology that that you ha- that has a lifetime here. It's all instant use.
Do you have to factor in the cost of shipping and the cost of trucking?
No, and that's an excellent question. So those things are all included in the cost of a bottle of San Pellegrino. And that's.
That's operation on the, uh, producer's end, not the consumer's end.
Yeah, on the producer or the distributor, right? So, you know. Some some rich Italian family in Brooklyn says, we love San Pellegrino and we think United States will too. We will buy, you know. Hundreds of thousands of cases of San Pellegrino and ship it to from Italy to us. And then that costs us money, so we tack on that cost to every bottle, plus a little profit. And now we have all the San Pellegrino available. Then all the stores, Hagen or whatever says, okay. Some people in Bellingham like San Pellegrino. We need to get it here. And so then they pay that distributor in Brooklyn to ship it across the United States. And that costs money, and so that adds another cost to the bottle, plus they wanna profit. That adds another additional cost. And then the consumer buys the bottle of San Pellegrino from Hagen and. That the cost of that bottle has everything inside of it, like how much did it cost to produce that bottle in Italy? How much did it cost to ship from Italy to? Brooklyn? How much did it cost to truck from Brooklyn to Hagen? And all the profit cuts along the way. So, no, you don't have to include that here cuz it's included in in this, um. SP cost, that four hundred and sixteen dollars.
Thank you.
Alright, so that was a lot. Yeah. Somebody started talking. Could you please show OpEx again? It's simply. So operational costs are costs that are required to operate the project. And it's weird using this language, talking about drinking bubble water, but it is a project. My project is. Is drinking bubble water. And my baseline for drinking bubble water, operationally, it requires me to buy the bottles. And to take the bottles from Hagen or whatever to my house. And so my annual operational costs for enjoying bubble water are the purchase price of the bubble water, four hundred and sixteen dollars per year. And I calculated that by one case per week and eight dollars per case, so eight times fifty two equals four hundred and sixteen. Plus the amount of gasoline I had to burn to drive to and from the store. And that's that ninety seven point five dollars because I had to burn twenty six gallons of gasoline, which we calculated back here. Multiplied by three dollars and seventy five cents per gallon. And so the total operational costs are purchase price plus fuel costs equals five hundred and thirteen point five. The stuff's super tedious, but it will, um. It'll start to click over the course of the quarter and then it'll become. You know, more second nature. And these are these are powerful tools and powerful, you know, frameworks for thinking about these kinds of things. Okay, um. Let's see here. Ryan says, would we include the fuel costs for the third question? Simple payback for both. San Pellegrino and the soda machines. Um, I don't know yet. Car cost, yes, I did anyways. I think that makes sense. Yeah. Yes, we would. Um, we'll slowly get through it all. I'll start speeding up a little bit so that we can we can do this. Do you guys mind that we just are kind of all doing the homework together? I think for this first one, I think learning. You'll there'll be a lot of learning done, and we might not go into such detail with later homeworks, but I think so that we all. Get on the same page and understand how to do this kind of work is good. Okay, my Alexander writes, my headphones cut out. Is the metric ton CO2 equivalent emissions we got from San. For San Pellegrino per case or per bottle? It's per, um. Year, so it's it's the, uh. Fifty two cases times twelve bottles per case. So whatever that is. It's per year. Alright, let's jump into the spring water. So this is the project, right? This is the idea. Maybe we can. Emit less CO2 if we just make our own bubble water at home. Maybe it will even save us money. Let's find out. Okay. So, um, have these massive carb carboids, I think they're called, at thirty nine. So these. Are they called carboids? I think they are. And the thirty nine, um. Liters. Per carboy. Per bottle. Um, that's a ridiculous number, right? That's like forty kilograms. You have to be pretty yoked to carry one of those around. The reason why it's that number is, um. It made the math work to equal the exact same amount of liters of consumption of San Pellegrino. Okay. Um, just pulling numbers from the homework. Refill. Guess I should keep the cost stuff separate. I was kind of in cost mode. So I'll put some. Maybe some dollar stuff over here. Spring water, uh, dollars. So refill, to refill, the carboy with fancy spring water is three. USD per carboy. Okay, uh, put this in the homework, but I want you to think about this right now. Carboy. Mass is, um. One point five. Kilograms. Does this matter?
Other than the trip to and from the store, probably not.
Does it even matter for the trip to and from the store? Think about random crap in your car. Does it change your fuel consumption really at all?
Probably like infinitesimally small amounts maybe.
Yeah, if if you're rolling deep with like four friends, yeah, that's gonna change your fuel economy cuz you've added like, you know, it's six hundred pounds to your car or something. Um, but if just something like one point five kilograms, that's not gonna change. So that was a red herring. That doesn't matter. Okay, so. Let's start calculating some of these emissions, um. It travels, uh. To and from the store is what? Ten miles or twenty miles? See, I may be getting. Travel by Volvo is. Twenty miles to and from the store. Trips per bottle H two O. Is. Only point five. And this is, I should stay consistent with my units. Let's call it carboy. So make trip every other week. And then, um. We gotta track calculate how many, um. We call our annual consumption. Equals. Let me make sure I'm doing this consistently. Um, we had twelve liters. Twelve liters of San Pellegrino per week times fifty two weeks. Six hundred and twenty four liters. So how many trips do we have to make? Uh, trips required. Per year. Will be, um. This number. Times we go, we have two of these, so we only have to do it every other time, and then divided by the number of liters. Eight trips per year. So because we're buying these, we're filling up these huge carboids, we don't have to go to the store nearly as much. Recall with San Pellegrino, we were doing, uh, two cases per trip, so that would be twenty four liters. We've almost doubled that. Or we've almost quadrupled that at two carboids per trip with and each carboy being thirty nine liters. So now we only have to go to the store. Eight times for a year for the for the bubble, for the homemade bubble water. Okay.
You, can you hover over that cell for like two secs?
Yeah.
So that's.
It's, um, annual consumption multiplied by. Um, we only have to. We do two carboids per trip, so that's where that point five comes from. I'm trying to. Divide it by annual consumption divided by liters per trip, and liters per trip is thirty nine times two. Another way of saying thirty nine times two is. Point five divided by thirty nine. Or one over two times thirty nine is the same as point five over thirty nine. I just did some fast math, quick maths. Okay. Have to go back to the homework and figure out what I'm talking about. So I had some like. CO2 per. Cuz we're on the CO2 side of things, right? And so, okay, yeah. Each canister, each CO2 canister, so these are those those things that you stick in the soda machine that charge it with CO2. Each CO2 canister contains one kilogram of CO2. Um, CO2 per canister. Uh, contains one kilogram of CO2, and let's assume it comes from fossil CO2 sources. It does. And causes one kilogram of CO2 emissions to produce, compress and transport. So, um. They captured some CO2 on the back end of some, uh, oil production or, uh, natural. Usually it's from, um. Uh, either fertilizer production or hydro- hydrogenating oils, like, you know, partially hydrogenated oil, the stuff you're not supposed to eat, but it's still around. Um, they do that by, uh, stripping off the hydrogen off of natural gas, off of methane, and then they have this left leftover carbon. And it's done at high temperatures with steam, and so it produces CO2. They take that stream of CO2 and siphon it off and use it to, um. To deliver CO2 for industrial purposes or food consumption purposes. So, you know, charging soda, charging, um. Beer, those sorts of things. Okay, so it's CO2 per canister is two kilograms. CO2, so there's a kilogram of CO2 within the, uh, canister itself. And then it took a kilogram of CO2 to charge that CO2 canister, so two. So there's eight trips per year. Okay, wait, um, we have to know how much. Soda machine that carbonates the spring water across one hundred and twenty last five years, it uses one CO2 canister for every seventy eight liters. And again, that's why I had that thirty nine. Cuz thirty nine times two is seventy eight, and so that conveniently makes the, um, CO2 canisters per year. Canisters per year is going to be eight as well cuz, um. We get seventy eight liters per trip. We get seventy-eight liters per trip, eight trips and each canister charges seventy-eight liters. So then the total amount of CO2 from the um. From the cans, from the canisters. CO2. From canisters per year. Equals uh eight canisters times. Two kilograms of CO2 per canister. So it's almost like a another um CO2 intensity. In this case, the fuel is bubbles for bubble water and the fuel intensity. Of the uh fuel is um. Is two kilograms of CO2 per seventy-eight liters charged. So we have sixty kilograms of CO2 from the canisters.
Charlie, I know you just explained this, but why is it two grams of CO2 per canister?
Two kilograms of CO2 per canister? So the canister ho- legit holds a kilogram of CO2.
Right.
So if I was just a dipshit and blasted it off, I would put a kilogram of CO2 into the atmosphere.
Right.
To get that CO2 into the canister, it came from somewhere. It came from a fossil fuel plant. And the embodied CO2 to get that fossil fuel to the plant, operate the plant and charge the canister. Cost another kilogram of CO2 that went into the atmosphere. And I just made that up. It's probably actually a lot more than that. But so that would that would be certainly a scope three emission. But my intuition was just that cer- certainly the amount of CO2 has gotta be more than just the CO2 that comes out of the canister. Cuz it takes CO2 to make CO2. Okay, so now we gotta do the gasoline part, right? So uh. Gasoline per year. Equals um. Number of trips times uh. Travel per trip, twenty miles per trip, might be ten, who knows? And then um. So that's total miles, then we divide by miles per gallon to get to the gallons. So divided by miles per gallon, which uh. Says twenty miles per gallon. Eight gallons per year, eight gallons gasoline, let's be better with our units. Gasoline and then. Emissions from gasoline. Equals amount of fuel used, that's eight gallons multiplied by the emission factor of gasoline. It's eight point eight kilograms CO2 per gallon. Cool. So um, the total CO2. For the uh spring water. Or we could call it soda stream. Soda water, that'll be unambiguous. Equals. The CO2 from the canisters. Plus the CO2 from the gasoline. Call it CO2E cuz there's kind of some embodied CO2. So already we can see that that's significantly less. We can do the denominator part of the MAC calculation or we can calculate the CO2 um reduction. So again, that denominator is baseline minus project. So this would equal. Baseline. Five hundred and twelve some odd kilograms of CO2 minus project. CO2 mitigated or avoided. That's pretty huge, right? Huge difference. And it's basically because we're not shipping this stuff across the planet. See all those sea emissions right here and truck emissions. Alright, so we figured out the CO2. Now we have to finance this um. The uh. Spring water.
Charlie?
Yeah.
Uh, someone in the chat asked, what about the greenhouse gas emissions from the machine itself?
The embodied greenhouse gas emissions, yes, um. Did I put that in the homework at all? It's a good question, right? So. It's a chunk of plastic. It's got a few um steel mechanisms in it. And soda streams actually come from. Occupied Palestine. It's. I'm always, I have one. I'm always nervous to bring them out at parties cuz there's always somebody that tells you that you're an evil person for using the soda stream. And maybe I am. I'm an evil person for a lot of reasons. I digress though. It's hard to do anything right in this world. Um. So yes, there will probably be some embodied. CO2 in the production of that soda stream and shipping it all the way from Palestine to America. But if it truly lasts for five years and it makes um. You know, four hundred and some odd. Or six hundred and twenty-four liters per year, like so six twenty-four times five. The amount of CO2 per bottle or CO2 per year, I think is gonna be totally negligible for those. Those admit those embodied emissions for the production of the the uh canister. You could look up the embodied CO2 per kilogram plastic, which I. I think I have. Well, I definitely do it in my LCA class. That's that's an exercise for me. I'll look up how much kilogram CO2 per embodied per unit plastic. And I think it's like. Thirty-five. I think it's in the low thirties kilograms CO2, so then divided by five years, it would add like seven kilograms per year, I guess.
You haven't bullet that says uh the life cycle of the soda mach- soda machine has uh ten kilograms of CO2 emission.
Okay. Cool. So I had thought about this. I forgot I thought about. I'm always, I often feel like I was smarter in my past. Okay, so. Per year, that would add. Two kilograms CO2 per year. Shucks. So move this down. There's a problem. Okay. So um. Embodied. What we need embodied CO2 in machine. Equals. Ten divided or ten divided by five years. Kilogram CO2E. So then this annual is gonna be this plus that too. And that changed everything a little bit. Cool. Now we are, now we're good. But did you convert spring water emissions to metric tons? Um, not yet. We're still in kilograms cuz I did the five twelve up here and this one down here. Okay, um. So yeah, uh, CO2 re- reduction, that base minus project, which is what we need for the MAC curve. Equals our result divided by a thousand. Thank you for that. Equals metric tons. Kilogram or metric tons CO2E mitigated. So that's pretty crazy. Just doing that, you save half a, nearly half a metric ton of CO2. Alright, let's get down to the financing cuz we're running out of time. I'm cool. Just keep on going past. Eleven fifty or whatever this class goes, but. I wanna be respectful of your time, so I'm gonna start cranking a little bit here. Okay, um, let's get to the cost stuff for the soda machine. Uh, CPX capital cost. Uh, what's the homework say? Hundred and twenty dollars? So that's how much that machine costs. Um. You have to refill the canisters. With CO2. That costs twenty-five dollars per canister. It's lifetime, it lasts. Uh, five years. What did I say the discount rate was? Twenty percent, that's crazy steep. Twenty percent. That's a rate, it's percentage. Alright, and so we do eight canisters per year, so. Opex for the canisters. Equals. Um, twenty-five dollars per canister multiplied by eight canisters per year. Annualized, well, let's let's calculate our CRF first, cost recovery factor. Um, is that funky equation with, you know, one minus D to the number of years over something, 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 something. Uh, but in Excel, you can do um payment function. And then you put in the rate, which is right here. Number of years or number of payments and we were saying we're their annual payments cuz we're trying to annualize this, so. Five. Payments, five years. And then to get to the CRF, it's we're just saying that it's a dollar, but we want it to be a positive thing. Cuz we're saying we're paying it, not being paid that. It's just Excel. Excel stuff, so we put a negative one to get the CRF. So it has a cost recovery factor of zero point three three. That should be per per year. The units say dollar sign cuz it's Excel. Don't worry about it. So the annualized. Payment, if we said, okay, I wanna pay for this soda machine over time cuz we're trying to figure out these annualized costs. Annual annualized capital cost equals the capital cost. Multiplied by that cost recovery factor. So I could buy it upfront for a hundred and twenty dollars or I could pay forty bucks every year for five years. And so forty times five is actually two hundred dollars. So I've lost. I kinda lost out on those eighty dollars or I spread it out over time and that's because that discount rate was crazy high. Some economists argument that households have really high discount rates because we're consumers and we don't think that carefully about things. We just want. What hover over CRF?
Yeah.
Yeah, that point two is similar to like, you know, credit card rate with for someone that has maybe not the best credit, which is. Quite representative of America.
And what'd you do to find the annualized CPX again?
Um, you take the purchase price, capital cost. Which is a hundred and twenty dollars. If you go to Bed Bath and Beyond, it's gonna cost you a hundred and twenty bucks to get one of these things. And you multiply it by the cost recovery factor, which in the cost recovery factor considers the lifetime of something and then. Uh, a discount rate. And it's really great cuz now you can take things with different lifetimes, like in that example I did the other day comparing two different water heaters that last different ti- different amounts of time.
So if you plug into the payment function, the one hundred and twenty dollars for the present value instead of negative one, you get the same number. Uh, the forty thirteen.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Yep. Yeah, you can use, you can use that payment function to go to skip that step and get right to the annualized payment and that's what it's for. You put in the uh. You put in the actual thing, the actual um amount to calculate is your annualized payment. So you could do that for anything, anything you're paying off over time to think about things. Or if you're, you know, buying a used car and the. The salesman's giving you a rate or something, then you can, you know, if you have your laptop, you can just type it in yourself and see if you're getting ripped off or not.
Sweet.
That's pretty cool. Uh, I did it stepwise just to so we really understand how these costs actually get annualized. Okay, I got, the homework says that for both the SP and the spring water, we make one trip for every two bottles or cases, so there would be sixteen trips, not eight. Or am I wrong here? You're probably not wrong, Ryan. Um. I was. I assumed that that we consume the same amount of water, so maybe I typed it wrong in the homework. Um, these are, these are the sorts of things that I'm not gonna worry about. Um, so, you know, do the homework. Uh, as long as the methods are sound, the actual like numbers that are plugged in, I'm I'm less concerned with. So say eight trips or sixteen trips, either way is fine. Okay, enter. So now we have analyzed capital costs. We have. Operational cost. Twenty-five dollars per canister. Multiplied by eight canisters per year. Okay, so then now we have the um. Opex cost for the canisters, but now we need the opex cost for something else. What else? Burns money over the course of the year for this bubble water?
The electricity, probably natural like itself.
Um, no, 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 no. So that's, these can, these these soda machines don't take any electricity. You're just. It, you're releasing CO2 from a pressurized canister into the water.
Okay.
There's some embodied electricity to make that soda stream, but that's not anything you have to pay for. So there's something trips to and from the store, yeah, fuel for transport, couple people. Uh, chimed in there in the chat, so um. Fuel opex is gonna equal um. Price per gallon, dollar per gallon. Multiplied by uh. Number of trips and again, I may be wrong on how many trips we actually do. Eight trips. And then multiplied by uh the miles per trip, twenty miles. That seems. Wrong. What did I forget here? I kn- I know what I forgot. I put in. Gallons, but it doesn't take a gallon of gas to go a mile, right? With a gallon of gas, I go t- I go twenty miles, so divided by. The um. Miles per gallon. Of the uh. Of the um car. Right? So. I'll I'll put this out and better. Come on, give me a new page. Thank you. So it's. Fuel cost is gonna be dollars per gallon. And then multiplied by. Miles traveled. And so. This term is gonna be trips. Times miles per trip. And that's where I had stopped and got it wrong, but then you multiply by um. One over. Miles per gallon. That way. The gallons cancel. Miles canceled and you're left with dollars. Okay, and that's why you also gotta use your intuition, right? So when I first did that, it said I spent six hundred dollars on gasoline. I was like, that sounds. Way too high, what I miss out here. Okay, so total. Annualized costs for the soda stream. Equals. My annualized capital costs. Plus. My fuel costs plus. Operational costs. Two hundred and seventy dollars. Um, now for the MAC, um. The denominator is the. Cost delta and it goes project. cost delta and it goes project minus baseline. Because a lot of our intuitions are these things, okay, we're buying something more efficient, we're buying something that reduces CO2, that's probably gonna cost us money, so we have to, we have to calculate um. We have to calculate how much more we have to pay to reduce CO2. In this case, we actually are gonna save money. So we'll have a negative marginal payment costs. So here's the project minus the um. Minus the San Pellegrino, which is the project, I mean, the baseline. So negative two hundred and forty-three dollars. So not only did I save half a metric ton of CO2, I also saved two hundred and fifty bucks by going this route.
Charlie, could you um, show the formula for the cell for uh, annualized cost for soda stream? Uh, down two.
I added all the costs, so it costs two hundred bucks to fill those eight canisters with CO2. Yeah, so what happens is you bring in your empty canister and you, the new canister is like fifty bucks, it's crazy. But if you bring in your old one, then you get a twenty-five dollar credit for, for the other one. So two hundred dollars a year to fill those things up and then um. The annualized capital cost, that a hundred and do- twenty dollar thing, but it lasts five years, so it's like forty dollars a year with a twenty percent discount rate. And then the fuel costs are thirty, so it's just filling the canisters plus um, the cost of the thing, plus your fuel costs.
Uh, why not the capital cost is, why isn't the capital cost included in that one?
In this one?
In the annualized.
Yeah, it is, it's just um.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so filling the soda stream and filling the gasoline, that's something you have to pay every year. The total capital cost, because it lasts five years, you get to spread that out over five years. But then you have to use this weird cost recovery factor thing because money in the future is not worth as much as money today, so you have to try to like project that future money into today's terms, and so that's what that CRF does. It's, so if the discount rate was zero, that means that tomorrow's money is worth the exact same as today's. Then that CRF would just go to um, to uh, point two, because it'd be five years, it'd be one divided by five. And that would be, what's that, what's that saying? It's saying that uh, that uh, you divide that a hundred and twenty dollars over five years, and so then you would be paying whatever that would be, twenty-four dollars a year.
Someone in the chat asked, what about the cost of refilling the spring water?
Um, yeah, that was the three dollars. Oh, right here, three dollars, excellent. We forgot that, I forgot that. Let's put this down here. Please don't die, Excel. Okay, so um. Refill opex is going to be uh, three dollars per carboid times um. How many do we have? Sixteen, right? Yeah, because there's eight canisters fills up seventy-eight liters, so, and there's thirty-nine liters per carboid, so it'd be, um, yeah, sixteen. So another forty-eight bucks. So now the annualized cost is going to include the refill for the carboid. Not as good, but still negative. Thank you for that. Excellent question. Okay, so um, now payback. Simple payback for this would be, well, it's not too simple because I annualized it, but um, so this would be more of a annualized payback, but you could do this simple, so this is gonna be um. Let me think about this. No, I will do the simple payback, because so the, so I saved this much money per year, right? And, but I had to pay for this, this thing, and so the simple payback would just be the capital cost divided by how much money I'm saving per year. So dollar divided by dollar per year, I had to think about that formula again. And that's not right. Oh no, that's right, it's just in dollars. It's annoying. How do I change what if? The units or something are? Format cells? General. Okay, so this is years, so um. Yeah. Months per year, twelve months per year, so it equals this times twelve. So seven months. It'll pay for itself in seven months. Uh, so that's the simple payback time. Um, so if I pay that a hundred and twenty bucks plus these different operating costs for this soda stream um, versus repeatedly buying San Pellegrino, I will have paid for that a hundred and twenty dollars within seven months. And after that, I'm, I will start saving money forever, right?
Can you hover over that payback cell again for a hot sec?
Yeah. It's just the capital cost, this is back from lecture three. Simple payback is the capital cost divided by annualized savings. So it tells you how long before it pays for itself. So like my solar panels had a payback period of like five years, which isn't great, but I did it because um, I wanted zero carbon electricity, not to make a ton of money. Okay, let's do the MAC. So the marginal payment cost of carbon. Well, we've basically already done it, right? So. Do I have it over here somewhere? Project minus baseline. So soda stream minus San Pellegrino for the costs, and then baseline emissions for the soda stream. I mean, for the San Pellegrino minus the project emissions for the soda stream. And so this will be um, project minus baseline for dollars, that's right here. Divided by the CO2 reduction, which is baseline minus project in terms of metric ton CO2 equivalent, that's right here. So it's pretty awesome. Um. We save two hundred dollars or a hundred and ninety-five dollars a year to do this. And um, we reduced point four metric tons of CO2 per year. And per unit metric ton of CO2 reduction, so if like one and, one and a third households did this. Or I mean, two and a third households do that, did this, we would save collectively a metric ton of CO2 and collectively we'd save four hundred and sixty dollars. And so this is a, a good way to reduce CO2 emissions. Perhaps a better way is not, just don't be so bougie and have bubble water at your house, but if you need bubble water, for whatever reason, do it via soda stream rather than bottled water. Unless you're messing with Topo Chico, that stuff's the best, so I understand if you have to do that. Okay. Yeah, I'll get this lecture posted for everybody else. And we won't go through future homeworks in quite so much detail, but I think this is super useful and you get an idea how this, this sort of analysis is actually done. And so what do I want from you for the homework? I want something similar like a spreadsheet, or you can write it out long form. You know, Microsoft Word or LaTeX, but that'd be probably a lot more tedious. But it needs to be clean enough that I can follow your logic. I can follow um, how you went through all this, through this analysis, right? And if you have slightly different trip numbers or mile per gallon numbers, I'm not gonna get hung up on that, neither should you.
Charlie, so for, for turning this in, um, do you just want like this, like the Excel document?
Yeah.
In, okay.
Yeah, just turn in the Excel document and you can, you can write little comments or notes, explaining your thinking every once in a while, if you think that would help. If it, if it's relatively straightforward like what I did, then that should, that's totally sufficient.
Okay, you, you don't want us to like, say like, this area is question one, this area is question two or anything, just full thing?
Yeah, let's do that. That'd be helpful. You can, you could highlight different things with like, you know, so.
Right.
Um, and there's that also, there's that question about, you know, what, what emissions do you not need to bother calculating, the de minimis? So um, you could have a look at that. That, I need you to answer in sentences, right? I think that's question five. Um, the marginal abatement cost is question four, so you could do something like, you know, highlight this. I don't know what happened there. Yeah, you could paint it something and say, you know. Question four, just so it's something that, that I can see really quickly.
Charlie?
Yeah.
Uh, what was the password for viewing old lectures?
Um, I think I fixed that.
Okay, I was trying to watch one last night and it, it requested, prompted me for a password.
Lecture three, damn it. Okay, um, Patrick helped me fix that. And the problem is like, I can't really test it myself because it maybe I could invite myself to the class like using my Gmail password, my Gmail account. Um, was it lecture three that was, or lecture four?
Uh, it's the one before this one, so I think four.
Oh, lecture four.
I think it was four.
Alright, Patrick and I will have a look at that. I'll get, try to get that fixed. Because I also, I wanna post this one too. And then it takes a couple hours for Zoom to like process it, so I'll post it later tonight. Let me see what's going on with lecture four.
Awesome, thank you.
Yeah, I don't know what I posted here. So it, can somebody else click this for me right now and see if it works?
I just checked lecture four, it required a password, but three was good.
Okay. Cool. Alright, um, I'll get on that. See, yes, this is helpful, thank you, cool, excellent. Alright, stay healthy and we'll just keep on trucking. Have a think about what project you wanna do. And you're welcome to work with another student or two, or work by yourself. Um, this quarter is all about being flexible. Right, alright, adios.
Thank you.
You're welcome.